So we will call the meeting to order. Roll call to see who is present. Rebecca? Bill?
Present.
Katie?
Present.
Anna? Bob, present. Brenda is not present this evening. She has a family. Get together that she's up in northern Minnesota with, so she will not be attending this evening. Would everyone please stand if so inclined and join us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can we hear everybody well tonight? You all plugged in on the audio? We have one addition to the agenda and we'll call that item eleven. And it will be a workshop. Discussion to see when we can have it, when it's good for everybody, hopefully in June. And it would be dealing with our referendum loss and the discussions we need to have proceeding. So with that, Jeff, do you have anything else to add to the agenda?
No, I do not.
Okay, I would look for an approval or a motion to approve the agenda with that amended item.
So moved, Katie.
Katie on the mo- motion?
Oh, second, this is Anna.
And Anna on the second. Any other discussion? A yes vote would be for the approval of agenda. Bob, yes. Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
That passes by a five zero vote. Schedule presenters, we have none this evening. So moving down to public input, if anybody wishes to speak to the board about anything concerning district. Information, discussion, anything like that, now is your time. So I will open it up for public input if anyone has some. Okay, we will close the public input and move down to consideration to approve the finance report. Josh, you with us?
Yeah. Are you able to hear me all right?
You got blue sky behind you. There's something going on in your life.
Yeah, Bella's playing down in Rochester, currently in the top of the fourth, up to one on Lord, so. Own center field.
Good news.
Finance, you see in the report there. We've got now the cash flow built throughout the entire fiscal year twenty-two, presented here just the full page through July. A couple of things of note on that left side in the revenue, some estimates for. Tax receipts from both Goodyear County and Dakota County. We'll get those usually about the week prior to them being received by the districts, so they're just kind of a soft estimate, but pretty accurate where they'll fall in. The other thing to note of this, otherwise everything's pretty much in and out, normal things. Would be the Invergney funds that will come in the first part of June. We get about three hundred, three hundred and twelve thousand dollars, twelve thousand dollars from Invergney. As part of a tax, I guess, you would be essentially when they moved to Cannon Falls, we still have about six years left of those funds. Of note, we have paid off the elementary roof and we've used or designated that those fees towards. The improvements at the elementary school and the entryway, we spent about a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars to. Make the entryway in the elementary a lot safer for the students and staff and community. As we discuss further, as you get along towards planning and facilities and maybe potential talk with. The referendum just went through the vote. What we do going forward with those funds as they're available. Of note for the cash flow and finance report is staying positive throughout fiscal year twenty-two and not having to do anticipation borrowing. Given what will be the preliminary budget for twenty-two that will be presented later this afternoon. If you have any questions, I can do my best to answer.
Um, Esser funds flowing our way, when will that be?
Yep, so the Esser, we've got the Esser One Funds, about eighty-five thousand Esser One. We've got the Esser Two Funds, which was about two hundred and forty-four to our district. And the Esser Three had not been released yet by the state, but we know the amount and that's to be six hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. I'll go into a little bit more detail during the preliminary budget discussion, just how those funds will be spent next year, but. In reality, with all of the expense additional with the pandemic COVID, social distancing, the like items. Those dollars are pretty well already accounted for, but the good thing to our district is. We didn't have to take a huge loss because of all the extra expenses due to COVID. But we'll talk more about the Esser Three as we talk in the preliminary twenty-two budget discussion later in the agenda.
Okay. Any questions for Josh?
I'm moved to approve.
All right, motion by Bill to approve the finance report. Do I hear a second?
I'll second, Katie.
Katie on the second, thank you. Other discussion? Okay, a yes vote would be to approve the finance report as shown by Josh. Rebecca?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
And Bob, yes, that passes by a five zero vote. Consent to join the agenda. Items under the agenda consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss any single item, it can be removed from the consent agenda for sec- separate action. Jeff, you always like to recognize acceptance of gifts.
Yes, this month we have a two hundred dollar donation from the Kramer family for the softball activity account. And a three dollar, three thousand dollar donation for these from the state of Minnesota for Cannon Kids. Thank you to all of our donors.
Okay, personnel items, anything, anything for us on there?
No, I think I've noted other than usual activity.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions? Have you had a chance to look at the April twenty-sixth agenda minutes? If so, you know, you can take, take a little bit of time to review, otherwise when you're ready, I will look for a motion to approve the consent agenda items as shown.
Move to approve, this is Anna.
Anna on the approval, thank you. Second?
I'll second, Bob.
Seconded by Bill. Any other discussion? A yes would be for the approval of the consent agenda. Bob, yes. Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
That passes by a five zero vote. Jeff Superintendent's report, you have anything for us?
I have a couple of items, but I think we're gonna save the Invergney and Ruff discussion, I think for the special meeting would probably be a better. Avenue to talk that in is coming up, so we'll kind of skip that one for now, but I was. Sent a letter by the Ed Minnesota Cannon Falls group here to start teachers negotiations. And so I want to know kind of a direction that you guys want to go as far as. When you wish to start, I, we were notified today that the legislature has an outline. For a budget for the next biennium and so, but it does look like they are heading into special session. And so if we want to wait until that is done, maybe later in June, they're looking at possibly finishing up in mid-June is what I'm understanding. But we all know how that goes. So I don't know if you want to table this until the June twenty-eighth meeting to maybe look at a date then, unless you want to get a preliminary discussion started.
I really don't see the point. What do you think? Anyone else? It seems like we want to wait till we see what's going on legislatively, don't we? Practically.
When does the, when does their current contract expire?
At the end of June.
Is it, does that, if we wait till to approve meeting with them till the twenty, the June meeting, does that give enough time to negotiate? Before the contract expires, or do we usually go past the expiration date?
I'm not sure, go ahead.
The contracts that I've negotiated, not only here, this past contract here, and then contracts in other districts have gone into. Past the contract date, that usually isn't an issue at all.
When things are finished with the contract, we just retro it back to the date that their contract ended, correct?
Yeah, yep, everything would be retro back to July first of this coming July.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we're not holding anything up that shouldn't be held up.
I think, I think both sides, you probably want to know what the legislature is finalized before we begin talking, to me that would make sense.
Jeff, that's all you have? Other things will get deferred to?
We'll talk about the Invergney and Ruff discussion coming up at the special meeting to get a direction on that. Unless everybody, unless somebody else has questions, I guess, that is all I have for now.
Any, anything else for Jeff? More of a discussion than a voting item, so.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move down. We have no old business under new business consideration to canvas the May eleventh, twenty twenty-one election results.
I gotta find the right tab here. As all of you know, we had an election. On May eleventh, and these are the results that will need to be canvassed through and approved. So if you take a look down through this resolution. We'll have Katie need to read the resolution relating to canvassing returns and then the question and then the results of each question.
I'll just need you to scroll for me if you wouldn't mind.
Yeah, I'm trying to take notes here also.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I will try to, if you want to start reading, I will start, I'll catch up.
I have to read a little higher than that.
Let's, let's get a motion in a second. On, on the consideration to canvas before we get into Katie's long-term reading. Do I hear a motion to accept the election results as shown?
I'll make a motion. It's Katie.
Katie on the motion?
And I'll second, Bob.
And Bill on the second. Any other discussion? Okay ma'am, do your thing.
So do I just start with the school district question number one, approval of capital project levy authorization?
I'm sorry, you're right.
Yeah, I had to go up.
I see what you're saying now.
Yeah, all right. Resolution rela- relating to the canvassing returns of special election. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number Two Five Two Cannon Falls Area Schools. Minnesota that the special election held in and for the school district on May eleventh, twenty twenty-one. Was in all respects duly and legally called and held, the returns thereof have been duly canvassed and the votes. Cast at the special election for and against the question submitted to the electors were as follows. School district question number one, the approval of project levy authorization. The yes votes was four hundred and fifty-nine, no, five hundred and ten, total votes nine hundred and sixty-nine. The school district question number two, the approval of schooling building bonds. Yes was four hundred and thirty-seven, no was five hundred and thirty-one, with a total of votes of nine hundred and sixty-eight. The school district question number three, approval of school building bonds, gymnasiums and outdoor athletics. The yes was three hundred and eighty-nine, no was five hundred and seventy-six, total votes was nine hundred and sixty-five. For school district question number four, approval of school building bonds, the artificial turf. Yes was three hundred and twenty-four, no was six hundred and forty, with a total votes of nine hundred and sixty-four. And that is the end.
So Katie will.
Row call of votes, Bob?
So yes vote would be to accept.
Yes, vote would be to accept the canvas, yes.
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
And Katie, yes.
That passes by five zero, thank you Katie.
Yep.
Next item, consideration to approve the fiscal year twenty-two preliminary budget.
And I believe Josh is still on.
Yeah, right here. So you see there, again, the basic summary of all the information that gets poured into the budgeting process. And what we're looking at is the top portion of two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two initial budget. To be approved, May seventeenth to twenty-one. A couple of maybe things to note, kind of going into building the budget in Fund One. I put in a zero percent increase for revenue as Mr. Sampson talked about earlier. The state just now agreeing on a budget package and not knowing exactly where that's going to fall. Try to be a little bit conservative on that and not. Overestimate what we might receive for avenue revenue. Also in that revenue projection would be a reduction of about twenty-five students for next year, and that's based on. An ongoing class versus incoming kindergarten based on just what we see as student counts coming into the district. Also, that's a bit of a decrease in revenue. Also, what we'll see in revenue for an increase would be the Esser Three dollars that we talked about earlier. Which will be about six hundred and forty thousand dollars to the district in fiscal year twenty-two. When we talk about those funds and where they're spent for the budget of twenty-two. Eighty, eighty percent of that is directed for costs related to COVID and pandemic, but twenty percent has to be earmarked directly to learning loss items. Whether it be summer school, credit recovery, night school, those sorts of things, so. A hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of those Esser funds are already earmarked for learning loss. We have a transfer of about a hundred thousand dollars to be estimated as a loss for food service in fiscal year twenty-two. That would become out of the general fund, as well as about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar transfer from community service. To help some loss in both prior year fiscal year twenty-one, loss of essential worker care. As well as some projected loss to start fiscal year twenty-two. And it really kind of puts community head back to the spot where they were prior to the pandemic. So there's about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that will be transferred of those Esser funds from general fund into Fund Two and Fund Four. Also, those funds will be supporting two teachers to help in some distancing. With classes, so classes can remain to a spot where they're manageable for what we'll anticipate to be some spacing needs. As well as some extra costs for nursing next year, as we've seen quite a bit of increased hours and time spent in fiscal year twenty-one for nursing. We anticipate to see a drop-off in fiscal year twenty-two, but to still have some added expense for that. So pretty quickly, those funds for Esser Three and fiscal year twenty-two get wrapped up into offset by expenditures. Some other things to note in terms of the expenditure side of the general fund. Every contract that is settled in fiscal year twenty-two, the contract that's set as we talked about. Would be the teaching staff, but all their contracts are settled for twenty-two, so those new amounts for twenty-two are built into this budget. As well as steps and lanes for teaching staff. In addition, we add just a small percentage to, we know that there will be some sort of increase to teaching contracts, so we have a little bit of. Put in there for budgeting purposes, and again, will fall more, as this is a preliminary budget. That'll be revised as we get into fiscal year twenty-two, and we know the exact amount of increase from the state for revenue. All being told, that kind of melts down into where you'll see the difference. About three thousand three hundred and seventy-two dollars of revenue over expenditures for fiscal year twenty-two, as it would sit now preliminarily. For fiscal year twenty-two, puts us at a projected audit total of total fund balance. If that are under a million dollars and still below that percentage that we're trying to strive for in our finance policy of. Eight to twelve percent undesignedated. You know, the next. Funds will go pretty quick, maybe I'll take a little breather here, if there are any questions on general fund. In particular, or maybe some of the assumptions that are put into building fiscal year twenty-two budget.
I wonder if we can talk about this more when we get into the workshop, I think this is valuable information for us to have, but it's probably incumbent on us to. To have Josh there either, either live or, or streamed, so we can talk about this relative to where we're going.
Yeah, I totally agree. I think, you know, it'll take a little time to digest, this is the summary, obviously, if there are questions on the detail. Certainly email or call me, and I'm more than willing to be at a workshop to discuss it further too. So kind of moving on from the general fund into the others. Food service for next year, as it sits now, we will still say with. The free lunches for our students. But that means that this might be a little bit of a revenue loss as we've seen in twenty-one. That kind of being the reason of the transfer of a hundred thousand dollars and Esser Three dollars to help what we project to be about a hundred thousand dollar loss. And food service revenue for twenty-two. In community service, again, the increase of revenue there is a transfer of funds from Esser Three, which is general fund dollars. To help offset some of those COVID-related costs, essential care workers, social distancing and whatnot. So that really, that even though it's a negative sixty-one, we are allowed by statute to go negative in community ed, but that puts us. More on par where we're at prior to the pandemic, and then lead into some discussions, both community ed. And maybe finance committee of how we start getting community ed back onto that spot where we're breaking even. I know when we had Smith Schaefer in our auditors to discuss our audit last year. Having a negative fund balance in community ed is pretty common around our area, as we try to support as many. Early learning activities and community service type activities. But the more we can try to go towards being cost neutral on that, the better, so there's some discussions there. Debt service and trust and agency, the last two funds, debt service is really based on our levy and what our needs are for our mortgage. For lack of a better term, and those are set by both county and state, so. We don't have a whole lot of play in those numbers, as we receive a debt excess, we see a reduction in our levy. Now we're gonna, you saw that in our last levy, an increase as we went from having a year of a debt. Excess returns and discount, it washes itself out, but it can be a little bit. Troublesome maybe to a taxpayer that sees one year a decrease in your tax for debt, and then a maybe a significant increase in the following year, but. Those equalize themselves out. And then trust agencies are scholarship, and that's basically just set on how the ins and outs go through the accepting of scholarships. In total, fairly balanced budget for fiscal year twenty-two, all things considered. And one that's maybe a little bit on the conservative side, as we were waiting to see what the Senate and the state determines on funding for education. When it's fiscal year twenty-two, and really a good jumping off spot for us to have discussions, both finance committee-wide and board level for the workshop discussion. If there are any questions, I'll do my best to answer what you have.
Any questions for Josh?
Hey Josh, it's Bill. You alluded to us not being at our stated general fund balance. Where do you think we're at right now as far as a percentage?
Yeah, so we all stay in at five to six percent total fund balance. And are undesignedated to be in that two and a half to three. There's not a whole lot of increase or change from twenty-one, while we've moved the number a little bit forward. It's still quite a significant ways back from where we are trying to strive for in our policy.
Yep, that's where I thought we would. Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Other questions? If none, I would look for a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-two prelim budget as shown.
I'll move to approve, Bob.
Motion by Bill, second? Anyone?
I'll second, Katie.
Seconded by Katie. Any other discussion? A yes vote would be to approve the prelim budget for the upcoming year. Bob, yes. Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
That passes by a five zero vote, thank you. Thank you, Josh. Consideration to approve the twenty-one, twenty-two school or teacher devices.
Yes, this is similar to what we did with the student devices last month, I believe, where. We feel the need to get these teacher devices ordered because of. The possibility that they may not be there in July or August, thinking if they're here on time for our staff to use them next year. And so this would be an approval to go ahead and order, and then they would have July first billing.
So it really doesn't change anything?
No, and actually with some good news today is that they came in at about four thousand dollars under what we originally thought that they would. Got some good news out of it today.
Yeah. We'll accept good news right now.
Yeah.
Other questions for Jeff? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the twenty-one, twenty-two teacher devices.
I'd make a motion.
Katie on the motion, who, who on the second?
It's Rebecca on the motion and Katie on the second.
All right. Close.
We all sound alike.
All right, we have a motion to second on the floor for the approval of the devices, a yes vote would be. To accept that. Rebecca?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Bob, yes, that passes by a five zero vote. Consideration to withdraw leave of absence request for twenty-one, twenty-two.
This request is from Chris Sampson. And I would recommend that we approve this.
Chris Sampson. Is there more to this story, or are we going to learn that as time goes on?
We may learn about it in the next agenda item, but I'll.
Okay.
That.
So we look for a consideration withdrawal leave of absence request twenty-one, twenty-two. Do I hear a motion for that?
I'll make the motion, it's Rebecca.
Thank you Rebecca, second?
I'll second, Katie.
Katie on the second? Any other discussion? A yes vote would be for the approval to withdraw that leave of absence. Rebecca?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Brenda? Okay Brenda, Bob, yes, that passes by a five zero vote. Next agenda item, consideration to prove the twenty-one, twenty-two, one point O F T E industrial tech teaching contract.
This has been offered to Chris Sampson, and I would recommend approval.
Yeah, go ahead, make that motion, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Who was it?
Katie.
Katie made that motion, do we have a second?
I'll second, this is Anna.
Give a motion to second, other discussion? Jeff, how does this impact that industrial arts position? What do, what do we do with this now? That's been some construction and some industrial?
Yeah, the, the construction has been moved to another person on staff who has agreed to take it. And we have backfilled that with other industrial tech classes for Chris. Okay, keeping the F T E the same.
Clean this up very much. I don't know if the board even understands.
Somebody, someone's not muted, I think Jeff, you can mute people.
Okay.
So.
So is there any other discussion? For that one point O F T E teaching contract? Okay, a yes vote would be to approve the contract. Bob, yes. Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
That passes by a five zero vote. Consideration to approve the addition. Consideration to approve the additional section to third grade for the twenty-one, twenty-two, one-year only.
Yeah, we're asking the board to add a section of third grade using S dollars to help uh with class sizes, and this is a recommendation coming from administration. And so there would be uh no district dollars used. They would be using S dollars.
Okay.
And is this an increase from three to four sections?
Yep.
Okay. I'll make the motion.
Anna, you did that?
Yes.
Okay, a second?
I'll second.
Rebecca, your square is lighting up, so that was you. Rebecca on the second. We have a motion the second to approve the additional sections to third grade for the upcoming year. Any other discussion?
Uh, should it be noted as far as what the class sizes would be? For the record.
Um.
I got you, Jeff.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so the new class sizes with four sections would be seventeen students in a class.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Jen. So we have a motion to second on the floor. Any other discussion? A yes vote would be for the approval of this contract for the upcoming year. Bob, yes. Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
That passes by a five-zero vote. Moving down, consideration to prove the twenty-one, twenty-two one-point-oh FTE elementary special ed teaching contract.
This contract would be for Josh Banks. I recommend approval.
Okay. Looking for a motion?
I'll make the motion. It's Rebecca.
Rebecca on the motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Anna. Other discussion? A yes vote would be to approve the one-point-oh elementary special ed teaching contract, which is Josh Banks. Rebecca?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Bob, yes. That passes by a five-zero vote. Consideration to approve a resignation.
Resignation is for Rachel Ford. I recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion. It's Rebecca.
Rebecca, hey, thank you.
I'll second. This is Anna.
Anna on the second. We have a motion to second on the floor to approve the resignation of Rachel Ford. Any other discussions? A yes vote would be for approval. Bob, yes. Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Okay, that passes by five-zero. Consideration to prove the twenty-one, twenty-two one-point-oh FTE fourth grade elementary teaching contract.
And Jennifer, correct me, but I believe this is one to the backfill Mrs. Ford. Is that correct?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, and the name here is Samantha Niemann. And I recommend approval.
Okay, do we hear a motion?
I'll make the motion. This is Anna.
Anna, thank you. Motion? Katie on the second. Any other discussion? A yes vote would be for the approval of this elementary teaching contract for the fourth grade. Bob, yes. Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
That passes by a five-zero vote. Consideration to approve the twenty-one, twenty-two elementary and twenty-one, twenty-two Minnesota Skype High School middle school, high school, excuse me, handbook.
Yeah.
Yes, this is a a yearly item, and the principals have updated their handbooks. And I were would recommend approval of the handbook.
Any changes to either handbook that we should be made aware of?
Then?
None at the elementary.
Okay.
And I was not made aware of any in the high school uh to speak of other than dates and irregular updates.
Yep. Our annual approval of the two handbooks, handbooks then.
Yep.
We can have a motion the second and discuss it if you'd like to any further. Do I hear a motion?
Can I just ask a question? Sorry. So I was looking at the elementary handbook. And under health services, it's the only time that we use a like a a gender-specific uh pronoun to identify the staff number. So it does say generically that a school health nurse, a school health nurse, uh, I can't. A school health nurse will be available, but then we say she. So I don't know. That's the only time I've seen that, so. It's just a small thing. I know that it is a she, but. No, that's you're pro- you're right. That should
You're right. Yeah.
We could make that change to they, if that's what you're thinking.
Yeah.
We cover either.
Yeah. Yeah, we can. We can certainly make that change if that's the only change that we're aware of, and if everybody's okay with that change.
That would be just fine.
Make the motion with that change to accept the update.
Bill on the motion with the amendment. As discussed, do I hear a second?
I'll second. This is Anna.
Thank you, Anna. We have a motion the second on the floor for the approval of the elementary and middle school, high school handbook for the upcoming year with the noted amendment. A yes vote would be for that approval. Rebecca?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Bill, Bob? I can be either one. Yes, that passes by a five-zero vote. Number eleven on the workshop slash special meeting. I really think it's incumbent on all of us to uh meet at some point in time, and I'm hoping it's gonna be June, so we'll have to review contract or uh schedules and calendars to see what fits us. We can determine a place and a time for this, but um I guess we I'd be looking for some support to get this done so we can discuss our next direction as we uh have to make some changes, I think, to our our budget, or at least review to see if changes are necessary. So um Jeff, I I've talked to you very briefly after the election was over that it probably needs to be done, and we need to find a mutually agreeable time. So I don't know how you feel about that.
Yeah, that's fine. I think broadly speaking, do we want to try this to do this as an evening meeting or during the day? I I know the only date for sure that I am not available as I will be at my uh national soup certification class on June fourteenth and fifteenth, but I I think if we want to initially take a look at June seventh.
Works for me.
Yeah. As long as we're speaking about a a specific date, uh, evening meal, day meal, meaning uh agenda times.
I can't do day during the week. I can't either. It would need to be evening.
Yep.
Yep. What time approximately are we thinking? If if everybody's all kind of okay at this point with June seventh, are we thinking of five o'clock, six o'clock? We want to keep it at six o'clock?
I'm twenty times after four, but.
How about everyone else? Anna, you had to make a trip to get back here.
Uh, not well. It depends. My schedule is not as consistent as it previously was. Um, I'm actually often closer or in Cannon Falls on Mondays now. Um six o'clock is generally better for me, but I can make five o'clock work if that's better for everybody else.
Rebecca, uh, how's your time schedule look?
Uh, the seventh, I just have to help out at the golf tournament for the school, so I'm pretty flexible. Five or six works. It's a rough day. The June seventh is for work, so.
Bill, how are you?
Uh, that's a office work week. Uh, I can make five o'clock uh if need be.
Okay. And Katie, you said you're good anytime after four?
Yep.
Okay. It we don't want to rush ourselves, but would uh would six o'clock be better for everyone?
That's fine.
Yeah. Okay. We'll do June seventh at six P M. Are are we able to meet side by side, or are we still zooming?
I think that decision is up to the board right now. Um I I think it's prudent to maybe offer a Zoom option still uh if you want to. Um, to offer the Zoom option, we would have to have Wi-Fi that we'd be able to use. And so, you know, we could, we could uh have something here. And for those that are joining us for dinner here, um, we could have sandwiches or or something else, I guess, maybe a soup and sandwich or something. And then start our meeting and kind of eat as we're talking. I I think that's up to you guys, what what direction you want to go.
We we have met in special meetings before, both here and uh we've met at Mill Street from time to time, just to get us out in a different area and maybe a more casual conversation. So either alternative is good, but wh- what do you folks think? First of all, would you be interested in meeting in person at all?
I'd be comfortable with that.
I'm comfortable with that. Yep, in person is fine with me.
Let's get, let's do in person.
Okay.
So um, the second one would be, um, can we location? Any anybody have any particulars on that?
I think based on the the topic, um maybe more prudent to meet at school as opposed to
I think, yeah, that's a good point. That's a good point.
Yep, whatever fits. Uh, let's let's make it here. And uh it's always, it's always nice to have a sandwich while we talk and uh and get more involved with things. Um, uh, what specific agenda might we want to look at, Jeff?
I I think the big discussion items is where do we go from here? Uh, we still need to figure out the goal of getting our budget in mind, and so we will probably need to have discussions around budget targets for what we want to see moving forward, the potential of cuts. Uh, if if it is going to be cuts, then how much to cut? Um, and then kind of give that marching order to the administration to bring back options. There's also the discussion of if you want to go back out and and try again in November, I think that discussion can happen as well. We would need to make that decision in August to fit the timelines that are needed. And so if that is the case, then we need to have discussions around, okay, what does that look like if we go out in August again? Um maybe have some uh discussion broad base around facilities and prioritizing and send some of that stuff back to the facility committee to work with.
The facility committee hasn't probably met since well, since you formally
Before they called the election, yeah.
Will they meet before this meeting, or wouldn't that be necessary?
Um, we can certainly try to do that, but I think the board needs to decide a direction at this point with us failing uh all four questions, and then we can send that information back to the different committees to take a look at.
Okay. Everyone in tune with that? So right now, what we've got on the table is a June seventh meeting at six P M in the boardroom um for dis- for discussion, working a working workshop, if you will.
It'll be a workshop atmosphere.
Yep, so I don't know, this probably doesn't demand a uh an action item, more like discussion and just we're meeting, we're meeting at that time, correct?
Yeah.
So Jeff, would we have any feedback from school perceptions on on the referendum at all for that meeting?
I I can call her to see what her thoughts are on why. I have a pretty good idea just listening to people, and maybe you guys have that. We can talk about that a little bit um during the meeting.
I think it's a good point, because I think we've all uh after we step back, we all need to reevaluate uh what was unsuccessful, if our approach was unsuccessful, or just in general, what what may have entered into this, and we've all got ideas, I'm sure on it, so it should be a good idea to share some too.
What is it? They, it's not the post-death, uh, but it's a postmortem. There we go. The postmortis, postmortem analysis is what uh we usually call that to see um what we feel happened. Um, obviously, the school perceptions may have an idea, um, but they won't know for sure, obviously, unless you go back out and survey people again to see why, but I don't know if that's necessary at this point.
No, I'm not sure it is.
I think it might be worthwhile, though, to revisit whether or not we have access to all of the comments from the survey, because I've heard from a number of people since Tuesday that they were frustrated that they provided detailed feedback and it was ignored. Um it's pretty hard to ask people to provide us with information and then not take that information into consideration, and they may have said one thing within the numbers but provided additional context in the comments. And I think we did ourselves a disservice by not looking at that ahead of time, and I think it will be very informative in as we set plans for going forward.
Well, I don't, I don't totally share it, but that's why we're gonna meet, so we can make have these type of discussions, so it's a good idea, good idea. So folks, we we don't have anything else on the agenda, and if you look at our upcoming June twenty-eighth, remember, we only have one official meeting. Uh, you can see we're uh we're knee-deep in agenda items. So take a look at those. And if you need them, if you need anything added to that or any other perspective, um, let Jeff know, let Dorothy know, and we'll see if we can get it on the agenda. Anything else for the cause?
Just a question on the twenty-eighth meeting, uh, are we gonna go back to uh in person, or are we gonna stick with the Zoom? Thoughts on that?
My thought is, as soon as we can get to it, I'd love to see it happen in person.
I guess I would say for comfortable meeting for a workshop, we probably could may may feel comfortable having a meeting together, so. Speaking for myself, I'm comfortable meeting in person, but I don't want to speak for other people.
Me, so I agree with you.
I think we may want to continue to provide a Zoom link for people that want to view or attend that aren't board members.
Sure.
Yeah, this, the the combination is really hard. I think when we had the last meeting for the sound is so difficult for the people on the Zooms to hear the people at the meeting. Um, I I think we have to be clear on one or the other. I I don't think that a duel is 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 the right idea.
I I wonder if we have the workshop in the boardroom u- using the technology, because we'll be a little bit closer together. It won't be so cavernous as we were in the auditorium to see if that helps or not. Um, I think that might help us in seeing what other setup we need as far as audio.
Yeah.
It's the speaker system that works i- i- is the issue, because really, Jeff, your your computer was the one that was kind of being picked up and then passing the mic around, you know? And then and then passing the mic around, you know, and then coming through that way. And it was very difficult for everyone outside of the auditorium to hear. So.
Yep.
Yep, I think we can, we should be able to get that accomplished in here, but maybe you can have a practice run for, for some of our tech people to see if it'll work. Hopefully it will.
Certainly work on that.
Yep. Okay, everyone, we come to that very special time in our meeting when it looks like we're ready to adjourn. So unless anybody else has a direct comment to do, let's, would someone please make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion. This is Anna.
Anna on the motion?
I'll second. It's Rebecca.
Rebecca on the second. A yes vote would be for the adjournment of the meeting. Bob? Yes. Anna?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
That passes by a five zero vote. We are officially adjourned. Thank you for coming.